To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical, literary, and justice world.
Again, thank you and welcome for everyone here this evening. First thing I'd like to do is do a roll call. Trustee Berenger?
Berenger's present.
Trustee Ferraro?
Present.
Trustee Carl?
Carl, present.
Trustee O'Connor?
O'Connor, present.
Mayor Dwyer, thank you. Next order of business, the organizational reorg of April 1st, 2025. The annual organization meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe, Orange County, New York is being held this evening at 7:00 PM in the boardroom of the Village Hall, Seventh Stage Road, Monroe, New York, exit, excuse me, Tuesday, April 1st, 2025. Mayor Neelus Dwyer led the pledge to the flag and called the meeting to order. Exit signs were announced to your rear and off to your right. Present are myself, Mayor Dwyer, trustees Berenger, Ferraro, Carl, and O'Connor. Also present is Attorney Trehun and Village Clerk Zara. The monthly meeting calendar is as follows. In 2025, April 1 and April 15, May 6 and May 20, June 3 and June 17, July 15, August 19, September 2 and 16, October 7 and 21, November 3 and 18, which is the third Tuesday or third Monday of the month due to Election Day that year, December 2nd and 16, January 6th and 20th of 2026, February 3rd and 17th of 2026, March 3rd and 17th of 2026, and April 7th and 21st. April 7th also serves as the organizational meeting, followed by the regular meeting of 2026. I need a motion. All meetings will begin at 7:00 PM. I need a motion to adopt the monthly calendar for the next fiscal year.
Carl will make the motion.
Second?
Berenger.
Discussion?
No.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Next order of business, the rules of procedure. Resolve the Board of Trustees shall conduct itself according to the Robert Rules of Order and to the extent that Robert Rules of Order are consistent with the Village Law of the State of New York. I need a motion to adopt the rules of procedure.
Ferraro will make the motion.
Second?
Berenger will second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Next order of business, employee compensation. Resolve the compensation for fiscal year 2025 and 2026 for all Village employees shall be paid biweekly with the payroll period ending on a Wednesday and the checks being distributed on a following Thursday. I need a motion to accept the employee compensation schedule.
Berenger will make the motion.
Second?
Ferraro, second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Next order of business, the official newspaper. Resolve the official newspaper of the Village Board is a Middletown Times-Hell Record and be it further resolved that the alternative newspaper for the Village Board shall be the Photo News for such matters that do not require legal notice. I need a motion to resolve or accept the newspapers, the official newspaper.
Carl will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Official depositories. Resolve that the official depository for the Village Board shall be Webster Bank, 591 Route 17M, Monroe, New York, 10950. I need a motion to accept this.
Berenger.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Second?
Berenger will second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Shouldn't that be Village of Monroe, not Village Board?
Oh.
Should that not?
For the Village of Monroe?
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's all.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Next order of business is board appointments by the mayor. Mayor Dwyer made the following appointments. Mayor Dwyer is appointed to liaison for the Highway Department. Mayor Dwyer is appointed to liaison for the Village Historian. Trustee Ferraro is appointed to liaison to the Building Maintenance and Village Hall. Trustee Ferraro is appointed to act as Deputy Mayor Effective and Effective 4-1-25 until March 31 of '26. Trustee Ferraro is appointed liaison for the Monroe Joint Park and Recreation Commission. Trustee Ferraro is appointed to liaison for Crane Park and all Village events. Trustee Ferraro is appointed liaison for all Village Technology. Trustee Berenger is appointed as liaison to the Police Department. Trustee Berenger is appointed to liaison for the Greater Monroe Chamber of Commerce. Trustee Berenger is appointed to liaison for the Monroe Volunteer Ambulance Corps. Trustee O'Connor is appointed liaison for the Village Building Department and Justice Court. Trustee O'Connor is appointed to liaison for the Treasurer. Trustee O'Connor is appointed to liaison for the Clerk's Office. Trustee O'Connor is appointed to liaison for the Village Insurance. Trustee Carl is appointed liaison to the Water Department. Trustee Carl is appointed liaison to the Orange County Sewer District Number One. Trustee Carl is appointed to liaison for street lighting. Trustee Carl is appointed liaison for the Monroe Joint Fire District. Staff appointments. Resolve that Anthony Feliz is hereby appointed Village Treasurer as per job description on file in the Village Clerk's Office for a period of one year from 4-1-25 to 3-31-26. I need a motion?
O'Connor will make the motion.
Carl, a second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Next is the resolve that Aileen Ryan is hereby appointed Deputy Village Clerk as per job description on file in the Village Clerk Office for a period of one year from 4-1-25 to 3-31-26 and renewable on an annual basis. I need a motion?
O'Connor will make the motion.
Second?
Berenger will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Next order of business, Acting Village Justice. Resolve persuade to Section 3-302 of Village Law that Yvette Rosario is hereby appointed to serve as Assistant, excuse me, Associate Village Justice for the Village of Monroe 4-1-25 to 3-31-26 and until such time as further appointment or reappointment is made. I need a motion to accept this appointment.
Carl will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Licensing authority. Resolve to persuade Village Code Chapter 115 Bingo and Laws of Chance permitting Bingo Games of Chance persuade to general municipal law authorizing the Board of Trustees to delegate an officer of the Village Authority in relation to issuance of a license amendment and cancellation of licenses to conduct investigations and hearings and the supervision of the operation of the games. The Village Clerk is hereby designated to exercise such authority. I need a motion to accept?
Ferraro will make the motion.
Second?
Carl, a second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Next door, office resolution, appointment, excuse me. Miscellaneous appointments. Resolve that Jeff Boucher is hereby appointed Chairman of the Planning Board for a period of ending one year, ending March 31, 2026. I need a motion to accept?
Berenger will make the motion.
Carl, a second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Resolve that Paul Baum is hereby appointed Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a period of one year, ending in March 31 of 2026. I need a motion to accept?
Carl will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. An emotion.
School crossing?
Yes, that's right. It's out of water, right? Yeah. Okay. We have two school crossing guards, Anita Zelenoy, North Main Street, and Eileen Lynch, Pine Tree. I need a motion to accept these appointments for crossing guards for Village?
Ferraro will make the motion.
Second?
Carl, a second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Resolve the Board accept that Paul Ellis Graham is hereby appointed Village Historian for a period of one year, ending in March 31, 2026. I need a motion to accept?
Berenger will make the motion.
Second?
Ferraro, second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Next order is the resolve the Board approve the extension of the contractual position of Village Attorney held by Elise Trehun, Esquire 2 Patterson Hill, Tuxedo, New York, 10987, as per job description outlined in the agreement on file with the Village Clerk as per fee schedule provided. I need a motion to accept this.
Carl will make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Next order, resolve the Board of Trustees designate the following law firms to serve as alternate Village Attorney with regard to specific matters in accordance with the fee schedule listed in the current retainer agreement for the fiscal year 2025, 2026. Elizabeth Cassidy, P L L C, 7 Grand Street, Warwick, New York; Norton and Torrey, L L P; P O Box 216, Goshen, New York; and Remetta and Remetta, 30 Matthew Street, Suite 104, Goshen, New York. I need a motion to accept these appointments?
Ferraro will make the motion.
Second?
Carl, a second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Resolve the Board of Trustees designates Norton and Torrey, L L P, P O Box 216, Goshen, New York, 10924, to the contractual position of zoning board of appeals attorney, per job description on file with the Village Clerk for the fiscal year 2025, 2026. I need a motion?
Berenger will make the motion.
Second?
Carl, a second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Next order, resolve the Board of Trustees designates law firm Elizabeth K. Cassidy, P L L C, 7 Grand Street, Warwick, New York, 10990, to the contractual position of Planning Board Attorney as per job description on file with the Village Clerk for fiscal year 25, 26. I need a motion to accept?
Carl will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Next order, resolve the Board designate the law firm of Remetta and Remetta, 30 Matthew Street, Suite 104, Goshen, New York, as a special prosecutor for all aspects of vehicular and traffic prosecution and village code enforcement of Village of Monroe Justice Court for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Ferraro will make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Thank you. Dwyer, aye. Resolve the Board of Trustees designate Hawkins, Delafield, and Wood, One Chase, Manhattan, Plaza, New York, New York, to represent the Village of Monroe as bond counsel for matters requiring bonding services for the fiscal year 25, 26. I need a motion?
Carl will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Thank you. Next order of business, resolve the Board of Trustees designate the law firm of Goldberg and Kramer, 50 Beaver Street, Suite 204, Auburn, New York, 12207, as contractual position of Labor and Employment Council for fiscal year 25, 26. Need a motion?
Berenger will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Thank you. Next order of business, the Board of Trustees designate Munistat Services, 12 Roosevelt Avenue, Port Jefferson Station, New York, 11776, as financial advisor of record for fiscal year 2025, 26. I need a motion?
Carl will make that motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Thank you. Next order of business, resolve the Board designate Lincoln Tully, P C, P O Box 687, Goshen, New York, 10924, to serve as the Village Engineer on a contractual basis for the fiscal year 25, 26. I need a motion?
Carl will make the motion.
Berenger will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Thank you. Next order of business, resolve the Board of Trustees designate J. Theodore Fink, A I C P, Principal of Green Plant Inc., 302 Pell's Road, Reinbeck, New York, to the contractual position of Planner for the Board of Trustees and Planning Board, per job description on file with the Village Clerk for fiscal year 25, 26. I need a motion?
Berenger will make the motion.
Second?
Ferraro, second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Thank you. Resolve the Board of Trustees designate H. 2 M. 2 Executive Boulevard, Suite 1401, Surfer, New York, 10901, to serve as Conflict Engineer and provide engineering services, per description on file with the Village Clerk for the fiscal year 2025, 2026. I need a motion?
Carl will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Thank you. Next order of business is mileage reimbursement allowance. Whereas the Village Board of Trustees determines to pay a fixed rate of mileage for reimbursement to officers and employees of the Village who use their own personal automobiles while performing their official duties on behalf of the Village. Now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that the Village Board shall approve reimbursement to such offices and employees at the rate of 70 cents per mile as per the 2025 IRS schedule. Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect immediately. I need a motion to accept this mileage reimbursement allowance?
Berenger will make the motion.
Second?
Carl, a second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Thank you. Next order of business is the fireworks display permit designee. Resolve upon approval of Village Board, the Village Clerk be appointed Permit Authority for the issuance of permits for the public display of fireworks under and pursuant to the conditions and restrictions set forth in Penal Law Section 189-2, but such permit shall be issued only after application shall have been filed together with an insurance policy in the amount of $5 million, naming the Village of Monroe as additional insured on the certificate. Village has the right to refuse any insurance company that is not A or above rated and licensed in the state of New York. I need a motion to accept this.
Carl will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Thank you. Next order is the attendance at schools and conferences, whereas there is to be held during the coming fiscal year, the annual meeting conducted by the New York State Conference of Mayors and other municipal officials, for municipal officials and nightcoms, Main Street Meeting, including webinar classes and seminars, B, the Training School for Fiscal Officers and Municipal Clerks conducted by the New York State Conference of Mayors and other public officials, and C, the following county association meetings of the Orange County Clerks Association. The Orange County Clerks Association of Town and Villages, Tri-County Chapter, New York State Building Officials Conference, the Hudson Valley Waterworks Associates and Safe Roads Programs, D, planning and zoning seminars, Police Department Seminars, and Training Schools, and Parks and Recreation Schools. And whereas it is determined that the Board of Trustees, that by attendance of certain municipal officials, employees at one or more of these meetings, conferences, or schools should benefit the municipality, now therefore be resolved that Section 1, that the following officers and employees are hereby authorized to attend the schools of love mentioned upon approval of the Board of Trustees at least 30 days prior to registration, mayor and trustees, village clerk, deputy clerk, treasurer, deputy treasurer, building inspector, assistant building inspector, code enforcement, fire inspector, water plant operator, DPW working leader, planning board members, zoning board members, police department personnel, planning board secretary, village attorney, and all union and non-union personnel. Section 2, this resolution shall take effect immediately. I need a motion to adopt this resolution.
Ferraro will make the motion.
Second?
Berenger will second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yep.
It just lists water plant operator. We have numerous plant operators, so I think that that needs to stand corrected as operators because they're certified, they're licensed, and they have to get CEUs to renew their water certification, so.
I'm sorry, so are you saying make that plural?
Water plant operators, yes, plural.
Okay. Kim, you have that? You put the S in, thank you. Okay, so we call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Thank you. Next authorization is payment authorization for certain recurring expenses. Resolve persuade to Section 5-524, subsection 6 of the Village Law, the Board of Trustees does hereby authorize the Treasurer to make payments in advance awarded on claims for recurring expenses for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges, advertising and time cell record, and workers' compensation, tail claims. I need a motion to accept this authorization.
Carl will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Thank you. Next order of business, the holiday schedule of 2025, 2026. In the year 2025, Memorial Day, Monday, May 26, 2025; Independence Day, Friday, July 4, 2025; Labor Day, Monday, September 1, 2025; Columbus Day, Monday, October 13, 2025; Veterans Day, Tuesday, November 11, 2025; Half Day, Thanksgiving Eve, Wednesday, November 26; Thanksgiving, Thursday and Friday, November 27, 28, 2025; Half Day, Christmas Eve, on Wednesday, December 24; Christmas Holiday, Thursday, December 25, 2025. In the year 2026, New Year's Holiday is Thursday, January 1; Martin Luther King Jr. on Monday, January 19, 2026; Lincoln's Birthday, Thursday, February 12, 2026; and President's Day, Monday, February 16, 2026. I need a motion to accept these holiday schedules for the 25, 26 year.
Carl will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Thank you. Next order of business, procurement policy and a motion by, okay. Let me read this differently. Procurement policy. Purchase contract limit is $20,000 and public works on contracts is limited to $35,000. Estimated amount of purchase contracts requires three written or fax quotations for RFPs of $3,000 to $20,000. Estimated amount of public works contract method is from $5,000 to $35,000. I need a motion to accept this policy, which in addition, just for note, is a very extensive document in our procurement. It's not, so anybody wishing to see it is, can go online and see it.
Carl will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
For discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Thank you. Next order of business is to set the organizational meeting for April 7 of 2026. I need a motion to adopt that date.
Carl will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Thank you. Okay. I don't do the Rosters, right? No. No. Okay. I had mentioned earlier, the procurement policy, if anybody wishing to see it, is a two-page document like this, and it's online. Basically refers to any procurement that the Village makes, has to be done under the guise of New York State law. And our procurement policy. Okay. I think that closes that out. Next order of business is a public hearing for the tentative budget of fiscal year 2025 to 2026. I need a motion to open the public hearing?
Carl will make the motion.
Second?
Ferraro, second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, ayes are carried. Thank you. For the public's notification, the public hearing on the tentative budget, which is the fiscal year of 6/1 of '25 through May 31 of '26, is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on the budget, please come up to the mic, give your name and address to the clerk.
Alex, we'll carry in Bill's residence. Are we open? I'll give you some of the codes, 1000, 1100, 1500, and 3620. How many building inspectors do we have, or are we hiring this year?
We have one full-time and we have three part-time.
And their function is? Is it actually code enforcement, or is it actual to handle applications for building permits?
No, they're code enforcement and building inspectors. They're qualified and licensed to do both.
Okay. On the parks, crane, the crane park improvements, it's $234,000 on that. Was any of this village-funded, or outside-funded, or through grant? Any of that money come through? Through any other process, or the village is paying for it?
The budgeted amount, Alex?
Yeah, the budgeted amount, that was spent for 2025.
It's all village, it's all village money that fund balances.
And the $688,000, I'm just a little confused in that, for, was that village-funded also?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else on the public regarding the budget?
Good evening, everyone floor, Village resident. We have the music going on over here in the streets over there, which is beautiful, very nice. What's the budget on that?
On the music?
Yes.
I think it's $26,000, $26,000 a month.
$26,000?
That we pay to Sirius Radio.
Okay. Now, I see that the budget's going up dramatically. And how about doing a referendum to see if the Village residents want to spend that money on that? I mean, it's a good thing, it's a nice thing when there is money, but if they, we can't have money for eggs, and for gas, or anything like that, the taxes are going up. Is that really necessary, that we should pay $26,000?
No, no, $26,000.
$26?
$26, two six.
No, but there's maintenance on it?
No, there's no maintenance. I haven't touched that since I put it up two years ago.
Okay, and what's about the equipment?
Again, that was over two years ago, we bought it.
So, which in general, how about just every penny that is going, it's our money? So, we are, it's, again, everything?
Every year, it costs us $26,000 a month. So, multiply that times 12, and that's what it costs you every year.
Okay, so, in general, how about just doing a referendum to see everything that's happening over here in reference to that? Or, I mean, we don't want the landscaping, which is a great thing, but when there is no money, everything that's been done over here in the village should be something that, as taxpayers, we should be the ones voting on that to see if you want it or if we don't want it. Again, if it's something that's necessary, yes, we need to plow, snow plowing, we need to do, we need to do stuff that's very important. But anything that's extra, if there is, again, if there's money flying all over the place, that's fine. If every penny is, it's hard. I mean, taxpayers are paying, the money is going up, everything is going up. Everything that you're pointing out, I think we should have a vote to see if we, as residents, want it, or we don't want it. If it's an extra thing, we should vote on it.
Just to clarify, you're saying the landscaping?
Again, landscaping, there's basic landscaping, which obviously, we want to have nice landscaping. But there's, work is going around, changing bulbs, changing, putting up stuff, going, taking down stuff. It's thousands and thousands of dollars, which we're going to go through, and I'm going to have somebody to review all that, to see the extras. If it's a basic stuff, yes, we have to cut the grass, make sure everything is clean, everything is nice. But all the extras, putting up on all the poles, there's stuff going up, it's all going down all the time, it's thousands of dollars that's costing us, it's my money. So, we have to see, if there's anything extra, it should be a referendum before it's been put up.
Hey, Abraham, I just have a quick question. You had mentioned that the taxes went up dramatically?
Well, the budget is going up, obviously, if the budget's going up, the tax is going to go up. Where's the budget?
No, 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 I just want to clarify, you said something about dramatic.
No, 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 not, again, I'm taking that back. I'm saying that the budget is going up. If the budget is going up, the budget is, it's not coming from outside. The budget is coming from our money that we're paying taxes.
So, let me describe some of the biggest costs that the Village incurs, okay? The Village's budget, on the, we have a general fund and a water fund. Proposed right now is, on the general fund, which is the A Fund, you mentioned a few items, right? Landscaping like that. That's at $12,724,000. Of that, $4 million is to have a police department.
Which is a given.
No, no, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we don't have discretion on that, right? Public safety first, right? And then you mentioned earlier about DPW, the roads, the plowing, right? Well, this year, at the percentage increase that we're referring to, at 2.59%, okay? Is mostly valued in salaries, benefits. The health benefits that the Village of Monroe gets, okay, has gone up 9.1% this year. The salaries, contractually, for instance, on the police side, they'll be going up a certain percentage. That hasn't been settled on yet, but it's a percentage. And the same with the DPW. And then, we have folks that work within the Village that are non-contractual, that also work hard, and you give them and reward them on merit, not because they have the pulse, but because they earned it. And those create that, and that's the 2.59%. Over last year, do you have your paperwork open?
Yeah.
So, over last year, your 2024 A Fund was what, total?
Total cost, let me grab that. So, we have total cost in the A Fund for fiscal '25 is $12,078,390.
Oh seven?
Oh seven, eight, three ninety.
Three ninety, got it, okay. So, spending over last year is $650,000. Of the $650,000, and I could get the exact numbers, I'm suggesting that you're probably at $300,000 just in salaries. Another 10% on currently, I think, what is our health bill this year, for the year? Do you have an idea?
Let me run the number quick.
I want to say, is it a million eight?
Close to a two million.
So, two million. So, it went up 10%, that's $200,000. And these are just on staples, these are not, you know, by taking things that we do in-house. For instance, most of the physical work that's being done on the park enhancements at the airplane park is being done by volunteers, including this board. Most of the other work is being done by contractual workers in-house. So, whereas, instead of putting, like, for instance, we just hired a fellow who actually is our maintenance guy. His services, along with his licenses that he, that he has, you know, in his person, saves us tens of thousands of dollars by having him in-house. We didn't have him last year, so we add that dollar to the value. So, it's, it's, there's a lot of value to all that, for the Village taxpayer, and that's how you wind up at this type of increase. If you, if you didn't have a tax increase of, of 2.59, this may, well, you didn't have contracts, let's put it that way, in the two units. Insurance, yeah, this year is $2,152,253 in health insurance.
And how much was it last year?
Yeah, she was $1,971,917.
And, sorry. But basically, what I'm saying, Mayor, I mean, you're a numbers guy, okay? You know exactly what's going on. We have to start seeing that it's starting coming down, coming down. Everybody's spending a lot of money.
You mean, you mean in reverse, you mean like?
If we, if we can, if we can.
As you're saying.
Well, at least it shouldn't go up. I mean, the taxes are very, very high. It's not going up dramatically, I said, I'm taking that back. But it's, it's high as it is. I mean, every, it's, it's, it's very, the tax that we're paying, we're very happy with the services that we're getting. It's not that, we have a good, a good public safety department, we have a good water department, we have good, everything is going good. But instead of going up, if we have somebody, if we hire people, maybe hire somebody that should do what the big government is doing now, and start cutting, there's definitely place to cut, not intentionally, that people are putting stuff into intentionally, but maybe that we should hire somebody that should go in there and start seeing, maybe there's hundreds of thousands of dollars that we could cut or change, health insurance. Maybe there's another company that will give it for less. Maybe there's stuff that we could start going down, instead of going up. But this keeps on going up, and it, maybe it's not a lot per month or per day, but when you look into 10 years, it's another few thousand dollars for every resident.
Sure. So, just to put a little context into numbers going up, right? This is my, my eighth budget as mayor, okay? If this budget is adopted at 2.59, I think you're going to see, overall, in aggregate, eight years, at 5% increase. So, I took office in April 1 of '18. Taxes gone up 5%, including this proposed year, over these past eight years. Can you think of a service anywhere that can offer 5% escalation in costs over eight years?
Well, that's when it's a service, okay? Now, when you're talking about somebody who's paying hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxes, 5% for $100,000 is $5,000, for $200,000, that's $10,000. $10,000 is a lot of money. Okay, it's not a lot of money if it's like a single homeowner that pays $20,000. It's, for them, it's also a lot of money, because that's money that they don't have. But again, what I'm saying is, maybe we should take somebody in, for the money that we hire somebody, that should do the same thing as the big government is doing, and come in and start looking. Maybe we could cut over here, maybe we could cut over here, maybe we cut over here. Instead of going up, we shouldn't go up, or maybe we could go down. I don't know if it's possible, I'm not an accountant. But again, we're hiring all these people, maybe we hire somebody that comes in, it's, it's becoming the norm now, I hope. This is what we're doing, we're getting people going into government, and they look in, and, and, I guess, in the big government, the same, people said the same thing. You can't cut anywhere, and now we're up to a trillion dollars that we cut. So, in small government, the same thing, we're hiring this, we're hiring that. There's things that are very important, and we know that. And this is why Monroe Village is what Monroe Village is, because we have very good services, okay? There's no doubt about that. I mean, we are the superior, superb village in the entire county, everybody knows that. But, there still could be ways of getting somebody in to start seeing if there's ways that we could either stop going up, or start cutting down, if possible.
Let me just throw another number at you, just to kind of put more context to this. So, in the police department, you have $2.5 million in salaries, let's say. And I'm probably wrong, but somewhere in that church. So, at 2.5, if they were to receive, say, a 4% raise?
We're not, we're not looking at where we have to. Public safety is not where we want to go.
What I'm saying is, everything has a factor to it. And that's why I was trying to express to you, in the past eight years, in aggregate, one year we gave money back to taxpayers, we were less than zero. One year we were zero, one year we were 1.1, so forth and so on. What I'm trying to suggest is that, in the eight years, in being, to your point about what they're doing in the federal government today, this board is the Doge, okay? And these folks here sharpen every pencil and every board, it has to be. And anybody that knows the boards and knows the operation, knows that this has to happen. There is no fluff. I mean, is there, is there things that you could say, all right, we're not going to put plants out this year?
Again, I'm not talking about, I just said about plants, and let me take it back. I love when the Village is beautiful, and what I mean to say is, there's times that you just think that, we don't have to go, when the good times are there, and we have a lot of money, and everything is going, yes, we want to make it shine and make it beautiful. We don't want it to be, I mean, this is something that, people come into this village, they see how the village looks, to see what it is, that's, it's a respect, and makes them do, respect the village. But a lot of times, you say, okay, this is not really necessary for now, this is not really necessary for now. And this is what the government Doge did over there, I mean, again, the same thing. And they cut a trillion dollars. And yes, you are the Doge, but this Doge going up 5% every year. So, how about, maybe we take somebody from the outside?
Mr. Monroe, I'm trying to say, so, this year, the budget is going up 2.5% above last year, okay? And most of that is attributable to both salaries and benefits. There's very little fluff in there. The fluff that is there, is those discretionary things you're referring to. So, I'm having a discussion with you, I'm saying, okay, so, we blanket the place with beautiful flowers, and everybody talks about them all year long, right?
100%.
People like our park, right? And the reason they like it is because it's, it's a, it's a nice experience. It takes time and money, and, and just as I'm thinking about it, Mr. Malkyuri, you asked me a moment ago about grants on some of that crane park monies, that's $688,000. I believe, and I'm going to check it now that I'm thinking about it, I believe some of that money, if you could check into me, there's, there's a line in there for $688. I believe that is part of a grant that we got, we had a $1.2 million project to dredge the South Pond, and we received from Senator Schoeffler's office $575,000 in grant money to do that work. I will confirm that, and the clerk will respond to you. So, just saying.
So, bottom line is basically what the community, what we're coming about, if there is any way of getting somebody to do like an overall, see if there is not from the stuff that it's important, maybe there's old stuff that's laying around that could be cut. I mean, things are changing, maybe there's old stuff going here and going here that we could, we could cut out, it's not so important. We're not talking about the important things. We're not going to cut public safety, nobody wants us to cut public safety. Nobody wants us to cut anything that's, that's necessary. We're talking about, maybe there is stuff in the budget, okay? I didn't review everything, but there's, and I'm not an accountant, but maybe there's forensic accountants, forensic investigators that could go through and say, listen, you know, Mayor, maybe this could be cut, this is not necessary anymore, this is an old program, it's, we wouldn't have to do it, we could do it this way, we could do it that way. And instead of going up, at least freeze where there is, or start going down. It's not, it's not complaining, it's just saying?
I don't take it as a complaint, I appreciate the input. That's not what I'm trying to say, I'm just trying to give you a little context into what this board has done in the past eight years, that I can speak from. If you look historically, it's, it's not been that way necessarily. But different factors come at different times for different reasons, whether it's an imbalance, whether it, there's reasons behind everything people do. I haven't seen, in my 12 years, anything that suggests, you know, discretionary spending that probably didn't necessarily need to be done. For instance, the downtown sidewalks, the lights, all that became part of a revitalization project that we saw as something that was important for our businesses downtown, to have decent sidewalks, to have curbs, a paved street, not full of potholes. There's not a lot in New York that can say that, right? We can say that here in the Village of Monroe. We have a, a street replacement plan, we do oil and chipping, we do so many miles every year. We pave every year, we budget for that money. Now, we could say, for instance, to your point, we could say, all right, well, we're not going to pave this year, where we set aside $200,000 to do so. $200,000, we take this 2.59 and make it 1 and 1/4 percent. But something doesn't get paved, and that's just forestalls, a plan of what we did. The DPW put out a plan for seven years on what roads would be paved, oil and chipped, and what those miles would be. And we could actually forecast the cost outside of the one commodity, which is oil, which is part of everything in paving. Outside of that, we could actually tell you, I could tell you what it's going to cost in 2029.
Mayor, we're going back to the same thing. Things are important, are very important, we need the sidewalks, we need the repaving. And we're not talking about cutting on stuff that's important for this village, and this is what makes this village so beautiful. We're talking about going back and looking inside, if there is something that we are used to, which is standard, and we're doing all the time, maybe there's something that we could cut over there, cut from the, from, from, from the bottom, not from the top. We're not talking about, yes, we need sidewalks, we need revitalization, we need the roads. That's something that nobody wants to cut in that, because that makes this village what it is. But maybe there's stuff that is like a standard thing, oh, we always do that, we always do this, we always do that, and look into it and see, oh, maybe we don't need this anymore, maybe we could take off from that.
Listen, I, I appreciate that, and that's something the board's going to look at after tonight again.
I appreciate that, Mayor, thank you very much, and you're doing a great job, and I really appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public wish to speak? Please.
We're not, kind of not on the budget, is that okay?
No.
No, this is about the budget right now. Okay.
We did have budget meetings that were open to the public.
Every meeting is open to the public.
Right, so.
And this is published, and we're not adopting it tonight.
Well, I don't know if you want to just read that cover sheet, what, you know, the House assessed that $100,000, the House assessed it $50,000, what the actual dollar impact is.
Okay, so, the taxes increase, we talk about 2.59, that, that's tough maybe to wrap around, so, thank you. That's a good point. So, if a home has a valuation, and these are, these are two numbers, your house could be $36,000, it could be $92,000, I don't know. But, when you have a home that's valued at $50,000, your tax increase from last year is $58. If you have a home or a property, when we say home, meaning property. If your home is valued, has a valuation of $100,000, your taxes go up $116. Now, with that $58, or that $116, times the number of properties that are in the Village, whether they're improved or unimproved, all weighs into what this document is. Everything here has a purpose. That's what 2.59 represents. If it were half of that, your increase would be, on a $58 home, increase, it would be 29, and so forth and so on. Yeah, it's, it's, I understand, Mr. Flor, I really do, I get your point. And, and I have one of the biggest Doge guys here. Okay? So, the board takes what they do very seriously, but we do appreciate the input, because that helps us to do what we do. Prioritizing, figuring what we can do. We lean on our department heads to give us fiscally conservative and appropriate budgets. You know, if we have software that's outdated, it doesn't do us any good to continue to use it, because we don't want to spend $30,000 on a new software. We make our people, we got to give them the tools, and then we tell them to go do the job. If we don't give them the tools, we can't expect them to do the job, at least efficiently. So, I appreciate it, you mentioned, you know, the police department, to me, it's the finest in Orange County. It doesn't happen by accident, it happens by the people, by the services, the resources that we say to them, here you go, the grants that they go and get, there's a lot of work that goes into what they do. I.e., the same for DPW. I mean, you know, it's amazing what we have down here, and the culture of service that's down there. These young people that are coming in, they're carpenters, they're electricians. We just hired a kid, he's a plumber, local one in the city, we got him. Now, he's going to help us where we would bring a plumber in, this guy is now going to be able to come in and do things that normally we'd have to pay outside for. That's a tremendous value. And I see that, and that's what I go for. Okay, no one, yes?
If you wanted to just discuss the assessment rules that we use in the town, and our assessment is pretty much flat here in the Village, because we're, Village is almost built out. I think our last major project that added anything to the, to the taxable assessment were the new apartments down here on Franklin Avenue and Spring Street. So, we're, we're pretty built out, our, our, our tax, you know, our assessment is, is pretty much flat.
And that's, and that's an interesting part as well. So, we get, there's a, there's a calculation that's made, and that calculation helps us to determine what that tax rate is. And that's actually a very big piece of this puzzle, I think. We go to the town, our town assessor provides that information to the treasurer, the treasurer then uses that in his formula, and that also helps us to drive that number. So, if, if, to the point of trustee Carl, if we don't have that development, and the growth factor is established by the state in New York, they tell us, you know? And being under the tax cap also allows our residents to have financial benefit from that too. By being under the tax cap, there's incentive by the state to give certain rebates, things like that, when you're under the tax cap, you can do that. When you're over there, I don't believe you can. So, those are factors. So, but I'm happy to talk about this offline as well, anytime. Okay, there's no further input from the public? Okay, I need a motion to close the public hearing?
Carl will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
For our aye.
Carl aye.
O'Connor aye.
Roy aye, so carried, thank you. Next order of business, public hearing amending chapter 200 of the zoning definition of family. Let me just, where's my? Okay. So, a public hearing is being held this evening, April 1, 2025, in this boardroom of Village Hall, Seventh Stage Road, Monroe, New York, 7:00 p.m. To review a proposed local law entitled Amendment to Chapter 200, Zoning Definition of Family, the Village Board of Trustees finds that residential neighborhoods throughout the Village, single-family dwellings have been illegally converted into boarding houses, and two and multifamily dwellings in violation of the zoning law, threatening the entitlement of all Village residents to the quiet enjoyment of their homes. I need a motion to open up this public hearing.
Carl will make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
For our aye.
Carl aye.
O'Connor aye.
Roy aye, so carried. So, this public hearing is now open on this matter, chapter 200, Zoning Definition of Family. Anyone wishing to speak is welcome to come on up. So, I don't, do you have a copy?
Of the law, yes.
If you could just, Abraham, would you like a copy of it?
I have it.
Oh, you have it, oh, okay. Counsel, would you give a summary to the public as well, just to give them a sense of it?
We were looking at the zoning law in conjunction with the property rental law, and we determined that, especially the zoning law, the definition of family was extremely broad. So, we modified the definition of family, both in the zoning law, and as you'll see later, in the rental property law, to narrow that somewhat, so that the Village could start addressing some of the problems it has with illegally converted boarding houses, where multiple unrelated people are just living together in violation of the zoning law. Boarding houses are not permitted in the Village. So, what you have here is a definition of family that has been blessed, if you will, through the courts. So, this has been litigated multiple times in various situations, dormitories, for example. And ultimately, the court has decided upon definitions of family that will withstand constitutional challenge, and this is one of those.
And what are they?
Well, you'll have to read the law for yourself, but essentially, it says that there are, if it looks like it's a boarding house, then, and there's evidence of it being overpopulated, for example, dining rooms that have been, where temporary walls have been built, beds installed, locks on interior doors, I mean, there's a whole host of what are called rebuttable presumptions. So, if a property owner is cited as having an unlawful boarding house, then that property owner has the ability to rebut that presumption with solid evidence that either everyone living there is a, you know, related, or everyone living there is one household. So, that's what this law does.
Is it constitutional?
I just said it was, yes. It's been vetted through the courts.
So, if somebody has a group of friends, they're living together, can they live together?
They can live together, assuming that they're living as a family, and not violating the housing laws or the building code, et cetera. So, we've found multiple very dangerous situations going on in this Village, where people's lives are at risk, and it's because it's not a bunch of people who are friends and family living together, it's unlawful converted boarding houses, and that's what we're looking at.
Does it make any assumption if it's a family, if it's a brother?
I'm not going to discuss this any further than describing what the law is. I'm not gonna discuss this any further than describing what the law is intended to do, you have the law in front of you. This is a public hearing, you can talk about it if you wish, but aside from actual test cases, I can only say that this is a definition that has been vetted through the courts and has been upheld as constitutional.
Who's gonna determine what's a family?
It's determined by the building inspector.
And what is, the building inspector is gonna be the one, like, going around, saying, what's your name, are you a brother or sister?
Inspector will be responding to people calling in and saying, I think this is an unlawful boarding house, can you check that out, just like he or she does in any other situation.
So if, if I see my neighbor, which I don't like, and I call in that I think those people are not sisters or brothers or not cousins, now are they gonna get penalized by the code enforcement?
It's not about whether you're...
Well, you just said that, so let me tell you, this is gonna be challenged, and we're gonna send it up to Attorney General immediately, because it's not gonna happen that we have people that are gonna call in on neighbors, say, this isn't my brother, it's not my brother, it's my family. And by us, we have cousins living together, we have other family members living together, and it's not gonna become an harassment issue, and I'm happy that you, you really addressed it nicely, that we could take it up to where we have to take it up, and we will. Because this is not something that you could start going into somebody's private life. If I own my property, I have the right to have in my property, live in whoever I want to live there. I assume my cousin could live there, my uncle could live there.
I don't, Abraham, I don't think that's the intent. It's not about your cousin, your uncle.
Well, Mayor, I know, I know from...
Maybe you should actually read the law before you start assuming that it's somehow...
Well, I'm based on what you told me, that if somebody has...
I told you as a synopsis, there are rebuttable presumptions, all you have to do is read them, sir.
Well, Mayor...
I will say that this has been vetted through the courts.
Well, it's gonna be vetted again, and this time, we're gonna win. Mayor, it's, it's, it's very simple, okay, it's, it's, I see where this is going, okay? You know how we live, and how our families live, especially there's weekends, there's holidays, there's, there's, there's long periods of times, and what happens is, if, if a neighbor could start calling in and saying, well, I, I see too many people over, this is gonna become, coming a real problem, and we're gonna, we are gonna challenge this because this is not right.
Abraham, I think you're, you're, you're going left when you should be right on this. And let me give you, I'm not even gonna give you specific, I'm gonna give you generals, but specific generals. We get a call for service, we respond to a home, the man is in a garage, and he's frozen. He's paying eight hundred dollars a month for that right.
That's not right.
Not right. We have a couple living in a home whose daughter is abused by the person in the next bedroom. They don't even know each other, both paying eight hundred and fifty dollars per month, per bedroom. It's not you. Not talking about your cousin, your uncle. I assume, like I would like their freedom, it's America, United States of America, that's not this problem. This problem is so pervasive, it makes your skin crawl. I mean, crawl. We have people that we're, we're sending up to mental health, we have people being pulled out of homes that aren't even, are being condemned the minute they leave the, the unit, or the apartment, or the house. The unit's being condemned because it's, it's inhabitable, uninhabitable. That's what this is about. And when you ask the folks, as, 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 whether it's enforcement, or whether it's, 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 it's our public safety or whatever, when you ask them, no, I don't know those people. That's not the environment that we want for our community, including where you live, where I live, in the village of Monroe. It's, it's, it's just not, it's not acceptable, it's not reasonable. This is a very diverse community, as you know, and everybody's welcome in this community, but you have to follow the law. And if the law says that this is what you need to do, and I don't mean this law, I mean the law of habitation between family members, it's not about mom and dad, uncles and aunts, right? I mean, it's not, you know, I have an adult son that comes home every so often, is he not allowed because he left? I don't know, that's not what this is about.
Mayor, you're a hundred percent right, and what you said is a hundred percent right, and the reason is, what you're saying is intolerable, it should never happen, and that's a public safety issue. That's something that should be dealt by law enforcement. The problem begins when suddenly the village gets involved, and every, everybody who has an issue starts calling on their neighbor. Now, this particular issue, which should be a law enforcement, a very strong public safety issue, becomes a family dispute or neighbor dispute because they have a law, and you'll see how many people are gonna take advantage of this. Between the worst-case scenario that you just said, which is unacceptable, no matter where, what, and when, nobody, nobody, nobody would accept that, no, no normal person would accept that. So what you're doing is, you're taking that worst situation, and we're making a new law because of that, instead of dealing with it the way we should deal with it, with the, there's, there's people who deal with that. If this is happening, it's a law, the public safety is in place, we have the best police department over here, and anybody who does that should be prosecuted and taken care of. But now what we're doing is, now we're gonna say, well, because we have very bad situations, now I could come in over here and say, oh, I don't think this is good, I don't think, who's gonna make that decision? Now it's gonna be the public, the code officers are gonna say, I, I know, I don't think, this is too bad, you should only have one bad. Is he living with you? How long is he here? Is he a cousin? Let me see the I D. This is becoming a very, a very, very bad situation, and we will stop this. We will stop this.
Who is "we"?
The community.
Our community.
The community, the, the, every residence over here is gonna take it up in arms, gonna send it up to where it has to be sent up, and I'm telling you, if it goes up to the A G's office, they're gonna look into this, and again, yes, what you just said, that there's very terrible situations, that's very terrible, but by making a new law in the village, that suddenly neighbors could start calling on each other, complaints could come in randomly, that I want you to check out this house, this is unacceptable.
But you would agree that anybody living in an environment that is not occupiable by, by human standards?
What's the human standards?
Well, if you have, if you have children in the home, and, and you have outlets that aren't covered, if you have, there's no light fixture in a room, and it should be a light somewhere in the room.
We, we, we have, we have, we have, we have child protective services, we have police departments, we have all these enforcements that are made for this, and if, if this is happening, they're there. We're not in a, in a situation where the village suddenly is gonna start knocking into doors and say, well, let me see how many outlets you have there, do you want to see the light over here? And I, and exactly what you said, my, what we feel is that this is the intention of this law, and this is what we're gonna write up and say, that the intention is suddenly, now we're gonna go into the houses and see, there is, there is bad situations, but the bad situation should not be by this and being said, if you wanna know exactly what it is, read the law, it doesn't work that way. If you make a law, and I'm here, just explain to me what the law is, who is gonna call on who?
I'm trying to explain.
No, you just said, read it.
We're trying to be proactive and be safe, and it's just, I think, God forbid, that someone's living in a way they shouldn't, and a fire breaks out, and someone can't get out of that house because maybe there's too many people, or maybe the outlets weren't, weren't correct.
Three, three...
That scares me.
I am, I am with, see, I am with you a hundred percent, I am with you a hundred percent. This village over here is up for, for a long, long time, okay? And again, there's the worst situation, which the mayor described, which is very, very bad, then there is the regular situations, and then there is people. We know exactly who we're targeting, we're not targeting that much our community, we're targeting the community that are coming over here, they're trying to make a better life, they're living families together, some of them are close family, some of them are not close family, okay? They're scared enough from what's going on, now suddenly, they're gonna be targeted, are you a brother? Give me your I D. You'll see what's gonna happen, this is, this is not a good situation if it's just like that. It should be given to the law enforcement department for them, they should be the one on top of this, they know how to do this.
Yeah, but Abraham, you understand, this is a building, the police don't have that enforcement, they're not brought in for that purpose. There's different reasons for them to come in here, this is a code issue. So, and I'll give you another example, you just made me think of something. So somebody has a basement, and they rent it out, and the windows and the ability to get in and out is only through a set of stairs. By code, a set of stairs in an event like that is not an egressible area, it has to be through a window. And there are apartments that we, code enforcement, have found that have been habitated by people living there as a family or whatever, in, in space that is not egressible. So it's a basement window, thirty-two by fourteen inches, and they can't get out, firemen can't get in with a scot pack. That's, that's the reason why you have four point seven square feet of, of open space for, for a fireman to go in or people to go out. It's that kind of environment, this is not about the PD. This is about people that are being placed in environments, and like you said, people are living as units, family, close friends, or whatever like that. If you're living within an environment where there's a dangerous situation by putting them in a basement, or putting them on a third floor, where there's no sprinklers, there's no egress, there's no fire escape, that's a problem, that, that's a violation, but that's a code, that's a New York State code. It's got nothing to do with the police department, they can maybe come in on some capacity to support, there's no crime being committed that they can enforce that I'm aware of, I'm not a, a police officer, but I'm just saying, this is about the village's ability to protect the people, people, and it doesn't matter who they are, I don't, you, you know me, I don't care your stripe.
A hundred percent.
What I care about is public safety.
You are right with that, but the enforcement, the way it's gonna be enforced, this is not, this is very, very broad, and too broad, and it should not be done that way. It should be very, 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 very particular when it comes to human rights, and the same as, the safety is so important, and everything else is important, it's important that people's privacy and people should not be infringed on their, on their, on their privacy, suddenly, everybody's gonna call on anybody, and it's gonna start becoming a, like, I have this law, now I could do this and this and this, now you're gonna have to answer me, who you are, what you're coming from, from which state are you coming from, what's going on? And now it's gonna become a whole new can of worms opened for no reason. So this has to be very, very, this has to go through the real, real people that know the constitution, know the law, not just somebody throw a paper and say, read it, and, and take it from there.
That's what, that's what counsel was trying to say to you. So this law, sum and substance, has been chewed up, vetted, this is, this is probably many other municipalities' laws, likely.
Yeah, I mean...
Which municipality has this law already?
Don't, don't even go there.
Okay, I, I don't even know, Abraham, I don't really know.
This law has been...
Is there any other municipality that has the same law that we could follow and look and see what it is?
I'm not gonna answer that question, I'm not gonna be put through some sort of interrogation.
Yeah, and I don't want that, I don't, I don't want, I don't wanna see that.
All right, Mayor, you're right, okay.
I just think that it, it's, it's very specific. I suggest, if you'd like, I would read it, by all means, share it, and if you wanna have another conversation, that door is always open, and we can have that conversation. But I'm telling you, what created this is conditions that have been found.
And I don't disagree, I don't disagree, because safety is before anything.
And it's on my watch.
I understand that, but this is, in my opinion, this is very broad, and this is gonna create very serious problems. If there's no specific, who could call, what to call, what's a family, in the general, what, what's, what is a family? Why is a family so, so tight, and why is the family now the issue? Why is, if, if, if the, if the, if the safety is the issue, what's the issue with the family? Why if it's two friends? If, why suddenly, when it's a brother and a sister, it's, it's safe, when it's, when it's somebody, two, just friends, it's not safe? So this is going somewhere, this is going to target something that you don't want, not you, again, Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry, just, that suddenly, it's, it's, certain people don't, shouldn't be together, like, because we know they're coming from different places, they're staying together, so it's not the place, it's the people, not family, why is family targeted? Why is it broad family, we wanna construct family? Family's not gonna make anything more or less if it's family or not family.
My suggestion, and listen, I, I hear you, my suggestion is, read it through, because I'm looking at it, it includes rental, it includes the proper channels, it includes all of it.
Mayor, Mayor, I know, again, this is, the, the, the out, the bottom line, we, we both agree. We both agree the bottom line, what you just mentioned, and we all know that, public safety. But how together, we have to be very, very careful not to infringe on something, on, 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 on our rights. And this is where I'm going, I'm not going on the public safety part. I don't disagree with anything you said about public safety, I disagree about somebody coming in and nodding, who is he? And this is gonna be the way to going in, now, oh, he's, he's not your family, who, what's his last name? Let me see his I D. Suddenly, we're going to a different direction, which is illegal, unconstitutional, and it's gonna open up a whole can of worms, in this village especially, when we have such a big mix. This is gonna make a big, big problem, and I don't think it's right. I think we should reconsider this before we vote on it, go through it, I wanna sit down and with you and see what it says. And yes, and I wanna see if there's any other village that has similar laws like this, and maybe to have something in there that will protect that part, we'll go just for the safety part and not for the family part. We have a lot of friends that come over to us that live with us, and suddenly, now that, that part is gonna be restricted, which is a big problem for us.
No, no, I, again, I think you're reading that wrong.
We, I'm, we've got, the bottom line is...
I said it too, yeah, you haven't read it yet.
Well, the bottom line is what we, with, safety, but the, 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 when you see on top, it's family, we wanna refinalize what family is, it doesn't say we're winning to finalize what safety is, we refine, finalize what family is, and that's wrong. We don't wanna realize, because that's an avenue to get in somewhere where we wanna, where, again, people might think that this is the way to get in somewhere, just to infringe on somebody's rights and start constri- restricting. This is what it is, and I think it should be reconsidered, people should look at it, and it should be really, really, really looked through. Other villages, I mean, we're not the only villages that have people from a lot of communities, and we'll see, is anything similar like that? What are they doing? Is it the same thing? I mean, Monroe is open for years and years and years, thank God, there was nothing serious happening over here now, but never, again, well, that hadn't, hadn't anything to do with that, but...
Maybe if I give you another little example. The way family used to be defined here and in multiple other places was someone who's related by blood and marriage. What the courts found was that many people live together as a family unit, and they're not related by blood or marriage. So years ago, they started changing the definition of family into a definition that was more inclusive of people who are not necessarily related by blood or marriage. So that's what this is, this is a definition of family that is broader than, if you're not my brother, my sister, my father, my mother, my cousin, whatever, that doesn't mean you're not my family. So you can live together and not be related, you could be friends, but there comes a point where if you are simply turning a single-family home into a boarding house, creating many, many different kinds of very serious safety issues, which our building inspectors have been finding, you would not believe what they've been finding. So it's not that they just went and knocked on the door, they were called by a neighbor who said, something's going on here, I see people that, who, there are twenty-five cars parked in the yard, there are multiple dishes. This is a single-family home, I live in a single-family home, I should be entitled to live in the comfort of my home and not next to a house that's been turned into an unlawful boarding house, which has created not only hazards for people who live there, but also hazards for me. So it's not like anyone's gonna come knocking on your door, or anybody else's door, and saying, is everyone here a family, do you, do, you know, are you related? That isn't the intent, and it isn't what's going to happen. But if I have a house in, in Monroe, in the village of Monroe, and I see that my neighbor is starting to, all of a sudden, there's twenty-five people in a very small house, and they have, maybe it's more than twenty-five people, and maybe it's multiple cars all the time parking in my driveway, there's trash everywhere, and I call the building department saying, I think this is a rental house, I don't know, but it's not what it used to be, and it's becoming a problem for me because I too live in this community. I too want to have my house, and enjoy my house, and have quiet of my house, and what we're finding is, that's not what's happening. People are renting houses out to multiple people, they're dividing kitchens up, they're dividing bedrooms up, they're dividing living rooms up, they're dividing dining rooms up, they're putting people in the basement, they're putting people in the attic. That is not a single-family home any longer, and that is not a family. So if the building department gets a call, and it happens to be someone who just doesn't like their neighbor, they are gonna investigate it, just like they would if... like their neighbor, they are going to investigate it just like they would if anyone called, whether it's a legitimate person calling for a legitimate reason or someone who's calling just to bother the neighbor. That might happen, but once it's investigated, if it's a legitimate use of the house, there's not going to be a problem.
I hear what you're saying, and again, two things. If they are violating by parking and trash, we have codes for that already. We don't need more codes for that. If there's no right to park on the grass, no right to put garbage, that's being enforced. That particular thing where you said your whole thing, your whole spiel, but at the end, you came back to the same thing. So when the neighbor is going to call on the other neighbor, then it's going to be investigated, and this is opening a can of worms, and this is unacceptable, that suddenly we're going to have a law that neighbors could call on other neighbors. Well, I don't think, I think they have too many people. It's none of their business. I have in my house 30 people on shabbos. Now, my neighbor's going to call on me, now suddenly they're going to knock on my door.
One day maybe, or two days, or, that's not what we're talking about.
The time that the neighbor calls, the inspector comes, he's not going to say, it's not like the caller has to wait two days before he calls. Is there any other village that has a similar law?
I would refer you to the Department of State website, and you can go find out for yourself whether this law is reasonable.
Well, as an attorney for this village, I'm asking you if, I mean, obviously you wrote this law, is there any other village or town that has this law?
Again, I'm not going to be interrogated. There are, but I am not going to...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry the way you're taking it. I'm sorry again, I respect you. I'm not interrogating you, I'm just asking, I respect you a lot.
Again, I suggest that go where I went, go do the research, go to the Department of State, read what they talk about, the definitions of family. Look at all of that, like I did. If you, before you start criticizing, and read the law before you start criticizing it. And assuming, listen, if I own a property in the Village of Monroe, my neighbor doesn't like me, okay? He calls and says, I see three cars parked on the, somebody is going to investigate. They're not going to say, oh, I'm not going to investigate because you're probably lying to me, or you're just, it's a vendetta.
I don't think that's...
They're not going to know that, they're going to go investigate.
I don't think what you just said is constitutional, and we're going to find out. There's no such thing, somebody can all call up, somebody say, I see three cars on the car, go investigate. This is, this is basically calling, and this is going to stop coming, neighbors are neighbors throughout the day, like exactly what you, you just said it 100% right. Somebody's going to call up, there's three cars on his parking lot, I don't like it. How many people live in here? Whoa, whoa, whoa. No, there's a new law. I could come in, I want to know exactly who you are, what you are, who's your brother? There's a definition of family, let me see your ID. This is going to go so bad, you have no idea. This is not, in my opinion, Mayor, you respect exactly this community, that's why you're Mayor over here, and you're going to, this is something that I really think should really be considered, especially if you don't have an other village that we could say, listen, let's see how it went over there. Maybe there is other villages, there's another village, let's see what they did, let's find out if they had an issue with them, maybe they, maybe they didn't, maybe they did. If it's a similar situation, there's other neighborhoods over here that people live in, that a lot of communities out there, there's Woodbury, there's Greenwood Lake, there's Cornwall, there's Newburg, it's all over the place. Let's see if anybody has a similar issue. In my opinion, and in the opinion of, I guess, whoever's going to read it, this is discriminatory. This is strictly discrimination that neighbors are going to start calling on each other. And I really think that should be reconsidered, people should look into it, let's give it another month, I'm going to try to do some research, and you should try to do some research to see, maybe, maybe there's similar things, maybe things we can find. This whole thing about family, restrict the whole definition of family, that word itself is a little too focused on family. It should be maybe code, maybe make laws about cars, maybe laws about garbage that will restrict that. But just saying that family is going to become the issue is something that's going to go, once the law is in, now we could say, well, yeah, technically the law's not made for this, but we still want to investigate who you are, where are you coming from, which country? Okay? Now there's going to be, people are going to start hiding, people are going to start running, and people are going to start getting scared, and let's see what Attorney General says about it. Huh? How about doing that? Let's see what she says. Bring it up to her, let her bring her people and see if we could have some law over here to restrict people that are coming over here for freedom, and suddenly you're going to ask them, who are you? Are you brothers, sisters, cousins? Let's see, let's wait and see. So I really think it's something that should be reconsidered and see if we could at least give it another month and, 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 and see maybe there is something that we could finalize and make it in a way that it should be...
My suggestion, no complete frankness, is I'd like you to read it. Read it first.
Well, if it's going to be passed right now, that's why I'm saying, maybe we should...
But I, but I think, let me, let me do this, I'll tell you what, let's do something here. "The Board of Trustees finds and determines that the incidence of single-family homes in residential neighborhoods being used as boarding houses were occupied by multiple families has increased. The village's enforcement officers have uncovered," that means they've actually done it, "serious overcrowding resulting from interior rooms such as dining rooms and living rooms being converted by temporary walls into individual bedrooms, bedrooms with multiple beds providing sleeping accommodations for several related or unrelated people, including minors. Interior bedrooms with accommodations, excuse me, with locks as well as attics, basements, and garages being converted into unsafe living quarters and bedrooms." That, as a result of an environment, has propagated this. And I, and I think, while I agree with some of what you say when you refer to the family and my uncle, my aunt, to me, it's unconscionable. I have property, you own rentals. I couldn't, in my best day, ever think that I'm going to do that to somebody. I just, I just couldn't, and it's been tried on me. And my result to that was, you either take those locks off that door and tell your cousin to go live somewhere else, or you're out. I rented it to you, your wife, and your child. That's the end of it. And it's a very, very affordable rent. I could get probably twice that. And I don't do that because I respect them, I respect what they do, I respect the hard work they are, and I don't take advantage of that situation. This here is specific. So what's happened here is, we live in the Village of Monroe, you said it years ago. Well, years ago, we didn't have those problems. Things change, problems do come up, they're here. And the problem that we're finding through discovery, through environments where they're calling, where they're calling the police, where they're calling Child Services, where they're calling the Village of Monroe, and they're saying, I need help. Whether there's mental illness within the home, whether there's a crime of abuse, yes, those people are invited in as well. Department of Child Services is involved. But there's also some code enforcement issues, and that's where you see a bedroom, a 10-by-12 bedroom, and it's got a petition up, and now in each, each box, there's a personal persons. I don't, I don't say that's one person, sometimes there's multiple people. And the reason sometimes you know that is because, what you just said a moment ago about the eight cars. The eight cars is only something to make you think, give pause to. Why is there eight cars? I know when Mr. and Mrs. Finity lived there with their seven children, like me, we had five cars. And when Dad needed to get out, we all pulled out of that driveway. If we pulled on the lawn, we went and found another place to live. Wasn't tolerated. My father wasn't having any of that nonsense. So you pulled out of the driveway, you let Dad get out, and then you can go on your merry way, but you are not, that wasn't even a question. I couldn't put gum on the street without getting my butt kicked. What I'm trying to say to you is that that's changed, and as a result of those environments, we're now seeing places where there are exposures to things that people should not have to deal with. And it's not about what I think is right or wrong, or what I think is good or fair or equitable, it's about people treating people as human beings. And I know many people in the community you're both speaking about. I have Hispanic outreach for the PD, I've been meeting with them since I became a trustee, and Dave Conklin started that. I know these people. I go to St. A's, I go to their churches, their pastor, Father Blotty, I know these people. I'm telling you, they come and they tell you. What do I do? What can I do? How can you help me? It's, 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 I'm ashamed.
You're 100% right. The question is, why should it now become a neighbor, a neighbor? If it's anything of that, we have the law enforcement, they could call the cops, if they call the village, you say, listen, I'm going to send over a police officer, he's going to come in, he's going to check it out. Why is it suddenly becoming a neighbor, a neighbor? They're trained, they know exactly how to get in there, they know their rights. The people over here, they're not trained, they don't know their rights, they're going to just walk in and stop...
All right, so let's say that, so the police go in on a call, and they go into service, and they see an environment that they know is incorrect.
Oh, then it's...
That's how it's happening.
Well, no, but the law is not that. The law is that a neighbor could call up the village, and suddenly a village code officer goes in there, and now he starts doing the investigation. That, that is the issue.
I don't think that's really what it says here.
Well, that's, that's what the law says, it's not going to, obviously, Mayor, if the reason is that the cops are going to be called, 100% I'm for that, because they're trained, they know how, what to investigate, they're special, they're personal, that's what they're trained for. They come in and say, listen, you know, I know everything is fine, but just let me, let me walk in and see, make sure everything is fine. They go in, see if there's any children, and eat like, things that you said, that, and we could give them a list of things to look, very simple, and now if they find something, they could come in and ask the code enforcer or whoever has to enforce it. But just the particular thing that everybody could call up and say, and with the cops, they know exactly when somebody has an issue with somebody, they're going to ask him, why are you calling your neighbor? Ah, because I, I, I sees... Hey, 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 listen, there's got to be, there's got to be cause.
Abraham, I'm just reading through it again, and I'm just trying to find that, that spot, and it's not there. It's just not there. So I'm just going to ask you to just read the document, we could do it together if you like, we can go line to line.
So can, can we push this off for another month?
I think we're talking about safety and quality of life.
That's all it is, Abraham.
Yep, but, but, it's, you're 100% right with that, but in the same time that we're looking for safety and quality of life, we want to make sure that people's rights are protected. You're 100%, both of them are right, both of them are right, both of them are very, very important, and we have a way out. We have the best police department, the best police department in this state, and maybe even in the country. So they could do that. If the public safety is the issue, why shouldn't they be on top of that? Why should it be an individual calling on an individual, and suddenly it's going to become brother and sister, cousin, neighbor, and it's going to be a whole fight and a whole thing? Why? Why is it necessary? Why you could give it to the people who are trained for that?
I don't think, and I generally get the most information from every department on a regular basis, and I could tell you that, I can think of one time in my eight years where it was unfounded. Not that it didn't appear to be that way, but it was unfounded, one. And...
What was unfounded?
That what you're saying, the cases that either police intervention were required or through different environments, code, or the tenant, or somebody calling, they were all held to be true that, that these, these provisions in this local law are to protect.
Right, and exactly, Mayor, Mayor, you're 100% right. So why change it? Why do we have to make a new law for this?
No, it's this, I'm referring to.
This was never, this wasn't a law yet. You're making this.
I'm making it a law to protect, that's what I'm saying. We don't have that, that protection here, we don't.
Well, again, the protection is if somebody sees something and it calls, and it's so important, they'll call the cops and they'll come in and check it out.
But we have to have tools and mechanisms to do that, and these are the mechanisms...
You have, you have the best tool that there is.
Well, no, but you have to give them the tools too. The state gives them the tools, the law, the federal, everybody gives people laws to enforce. This allows the enforcement of those things.
So is there any other town or village that has something like this that we could look at?
That's a great question, I don't know that.
So I think before, before we just jump on something, let's see a model of another village or town that has this, and see if it works, if it doesn't work. It's, it's not something that is, is, one month is going to make a big difference. We could see and wait, call up another village, let's see something in model, talk to the people over there, see if it did infringe on the rights, if it did not, it worked okay, it didn't work okay, let's see what's happening. Why is, why is it the rush to do it? Just throw it out and do it. Let's wait, do it. There's, there's, okay, we hear what he's saying, let's find out if another village like it, is there another place that has this law? Is it working out? Is it not working out? Is it good? Is it bad?
Well, procedurally, so we announced this public law on March 18th?
Yes.
Okay, was it publicized at that time?
Yes.
So it was filed in the paper, it was posted outside, and it was put on our website? Have we gotten any responses on it?
None.
So here we are on April 1st, which is now 13 days later, and we haven't heard from a single body about it.
Mayor, I understand, I hear what you're saying.
And it's not about jamming anything down anybody's throat, it's about trying to create an environment that I think is getting really out of hand.
And, and what's going to happen if you wait and find out if there's a similar other village or other town?
The City of Poughkeepsie has this law, and I'm sure there are others, and I, I got this law from the Department of State. I got the definition from the Department of State. So I would suggest to the board, this is not a discriminatory law, it's being misread, it's being couched as if it's something that it isn't. And I would also remind you and everybody else that the way the building, the way the zoning law is enforced now, the way the building code, the uniform code is enforced now, is people call the building department and complain. That's the way it's always been. So if you're saying that this is somehow a tool that your neighbor can use against you, that neighbor has always had that tool.
So why do we have to have this? It's okay.
I explain to you again, that the definition of family as it was here and in other areas was too narrow, and it was by a family as someone who is related by blood or marriage that is too narrow. This broadens that definition to allow people who are not related by, by blood or marriage to live together as a family. So you are misreading the law, and you're, you're assuming that if there's a discriminatory intent, and I tell you uncategorically, there is not.
Okay, so City of Poughkeepsie has this, this exact law?
I, yeah, I'm sure it's very, very similar to that. I'm sure that, I'm not going to say letter for letter, word for word, but I'm going to say yes, that there is similar language.
There are many villages and towns, this, this goes way back to a case probably 25 years ago, when the definition of family was challenged and overturned because it was too narrow. And so municipalities throughout New York started changing it, and there was a lot of litigation, and this is a definition that was upheld by the courts. I'll just tell you that, if you want to call it, you should call.
We, we're not, I'm not calling, I'm not calling, I'm just saying, what, 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 what people, once this is going to start, that people are going to start calling their neighbors, we're not talking, we're not, we're not, we're not, we're not talking about family. The law over here basically says that when somebody calls on somebody else, the code enforcement has a right to go in and start doing, and enforce themselves into the house.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Abraham. Okay, anyone else on this matter? Okay, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Call the question.
Berenger, aye.
Roy, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Roy, aye, so carried. Next public hearing scheduled for this evening is the amendment to chapter 158 of the rental property. A public hearing is being held on April 1st, 2025, in the boardroom of the Village Hall of Seventh Stage Road to review the proposed local law entitled Amendment to Chapter 158 Rental Property. The Village Board of Trustees hereby determines that further clarification of the rental property law is necessary for the efficient and lawful enforcement of this chapter. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Berenger will make the motion.
Carl will second.
Call the question.
Berenger, aye.
Roy, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Okay, anyone wishing upon, speaking on this matter, is welcome to come up to the microphone and speak. Uh, give your name to the clerk. And let me just pull it up myself. I'm just gonna read it too. I think the opening paragraph, if just anybody would like to. So the legislative purpose, the legislative body, the purpose of it is boarding houses have been and continue to be prohibited in the Village of Monroe. So it's, it's already in the books, and it continues to be prohibited of the zoning chapter. Further, two family and multifamily residential units are permitted only in specified zoning districts per chapter two hundred of the Village Code, so they currently exist. The Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe finds that in their residential neighborhoods throughout the village, single-family dwellings have been illegally converted into boarding houses and two and multifamily dwellings in violation of the zoning law, threatening the entitlement of village residents to the quiet enjoyment of their homes. In addition, multiple accessory apartments, including multiple accessory, excuse me, multiple accessory within one-family dwellings that do not comply with the zoning regulations are being created. Together, these occupancies are referred to as illegal residential occupancies. Illegal residential occupancies occur on properties that are mostly owned by absentee landlords and have resulted in overcrowded conditions in buildings without adequate provision of basic sanitation, protection against fires, improper ventilation, inadequate room size, improper maintenance, and other basic considerations related to the protection of the health, safety, and welfare of the village residents and the continued quiet enjoyment of residential neighborhoods. The Village Code enforcement officers are uncovering with increasing frequency single-family homes located in erstwhile quiet residential neighborhoods occupied by multiple individuals. Yeah. Sorry? No, chapter two hundred. Who did not know he-
No, no, this, I thought you were opening the one on one fifty- Please, please.
Yeah.
Please, give him the, at least.
It's chapter two hundred. Oh, I apologize. Where did I get that from?
You were reading two hundred.
Yeah.
Two hundred again.
Give him the paper once, it's probably easier.
Two hundred.
Give him the paper. This is two hundred, this is one fifty-eight.
Give me one fifty-eight.
This, this local law really modifies and makes more efficient the process of issuing rental permits.
Sorry, thank you.
That's exactly what I'm reading. It's exactly the paragraph I just read.
But it's, it's, it's an-
Okay.
It's modified. The purpose is modified.
I understand, okay. Anyone wishing upon speaking? I can't have this thing. It's gotta go away. Here it is, it's right here.
I'm gonna leave it there.
Paper, paper, lots of paper.
So for example, you have, um, definitions of code enforcement officer. Again, this came directly from the code enforcement officers upstairs who are trying to, um, more efficiently administer the rental permit law, which hasn't been touched in probably ten or fifteen years. So they asked the Village Board to, um, modify that law to bring it more in line with some of the other municipalities, like the Town of Monroe, who just modified their rental law as well. So for example, there is a definition of dangerous substandard condition, which there was no definition before, and they asked us to make a definition of that, so that would help them as they uncover these situations. Also, there's a lot of subletting going on. So what the building inspectors were finding is that a person or persons would sublet one house, then they would turn it into a boarding house, then they would go sublet another one, or they would go, uh, rent another one, sublet that, and this was, uh, becoming a real problem in the village. So they wanted a definition of what subletting was, uh, and to try and address that as well. Okay, and then the final, the sort of the process of what happens when a violation is issued because there's no rental permit, when the reinspection should occur. So all of that was very, um, very tedious and hard to enforce, uh, and so they asked the board to make these changes.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak upon that? Local law. Okay, uh, just for the record, note that no one has asked to come up and speak. Uh, I need a motion to close the public hearing on the amendment to chapter one fifty-eight rental law.
Carl will make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Roy, aye, so carried, thank you. Next order of business, the approval of meeting minutes of March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, submitted by the clerk. I need a motion to accept.
Carl will make that motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Roy, aye, so carried, thank you. Next order of business is completion of probation, DPW Neil Musan, building maintenance mechanic. Resolved the, uh, the following employee hereby completes their probationary period, Neil Musan, effective March sixth, twenty twenty-five. Necessary MSD four-two-six B will be submitted to the Orange County Department of Human Resources. I need a motion to accept the, uh, completion.
Ferraro will make the motion.
Second?
Barringer will second.
Question? Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Roy, aye, so carried. Next order of business, uh, trustee Ferraro.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees appoints resident Charles Tuchetti as a commissioner to the Monroe Joint Parks and Recreation Com- Commission, fulfilling the unexpired term of Clarence Bell, expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second?
Barringer will second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Roy, aye, so carried.
This is for the Smith-Clove Park Board, correct?
This is for the Monroe Joint Park and Recreation Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service. Okay, uh, next order of business, uh, adoption of local law number two of twenty twenty-five, uh, which is the, uh, definition of family. Whereas the Village Board of the Village of Monroe, New York duly notice a public hearing held on April one, twenty twenty-five, and whereas the Village Board solicited public comment during said public hearing on April one, twenty twenty-five, and whereas the proposed local law amends chapter two hundred defining family. Now therefore be resolved that where above the, the above whereas paragraphs are incorporated herein by reference number two, the local law amendment to chapter two hundred zoning definition of family as attached is adopted as local law number two of twenty twenty-five to the Village of Monroe on April one, twenty twenty-five. Number three, the Village Board hereby directs the Village Clerk to take all steps necessary to process and file the said local law. And number four, this resolution shall be effectively, excuse me, effective immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. I need a motion to adopt this local law two-
Ferraro, make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Roy, aye, so carried. Next order of business is the adoption of local law number three of twenty twenty-five, the amendment to chapter one fifty-eight rental property. Whereas the Village Board of the Village of Monroe, New York duly notice a public hearing held on April one, twenty twenty-five, and whereas the Village Board solicited public comment during said public hearing on April one, twenty twenty-five. And whereas the proposed local law amends chapter one fifty-eight rental property, and now therefore be resolved that the above whereas paragraphs are incorporated herein by reference number two, the local law amendment to chapter one fifty-eight rental property as attached is adopted by local law three of twenty twenty-five of the Village of Monroe on April one, twenty twenty-five. Three, the Village Board hereby directs the Village Clerk to take all ne- ne- uh, necessary steps to process and file said local law. And four, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. I need a motion to adopt this local law three of twenty twenty-five.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Second?
Carl will, excuse me, Carl will second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Roy, aye, so carried. Next order of, uh, business, event application, trustee Ferraro.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees approves the event app- application submitted by the Monroe Lions Club to host a fishing derby on the south side of Crane Park on Saturday, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, from eight AM to one PM. The application has been reviewed and approved by the Building Department, the DPW, and Police Department. The Monroe Police Department will monitor the area and provide assistance as needed at no additional cost. Monroe Fire District and Monroe Volunteer Ambulances will be notified, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Barringer will second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
I have a second part. Resolved, the Board of Trustees waives the event application fee due to the Lions Club being a nonprofit organization. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Barringer will second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Roy, aye, so carried. Next order of business, request to travel, trustee O'Connor?
Resolved, the Board of Trustees approves Village Justice Strauss's request to send court clerk Tina Tripoli to the free training class offered by the Unified Court System and the Office of Court Administration on DWI matters and issues related thereto. The class will be held at the Dueschel Institute, North Broadway, White Plains, New York, on May eighth, twenty twenty-five. Judge Strauss will be attending a similar class for Town and Village justices on May ninth, twenty twenty-five. There's no cost for the course, and court clerk Tina Tripoli and Judge Strauss will submit a voucher from Hyland, which will be allocated from budget line A eleven ten, uh, forty-one hundred, general court expenses. And I'll put this in the form of a motion.
Carl will second.
Question? Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
So carried, uh, next order of business is the weekly lawn maintenance, twenty twenty-five. Resolved, the Board of Trustees approves the following contractors to be used by the Village of Monroe during the twenty twenty-five season to mow those properties that have been maintained by their owners, whose grass has exceeded the approved height requirement within the Village Code and has been issued violations from the building or slash code enforcement departments. The contractors using prevailing wages are Green Meadows Landscaping, one oh-four West Oakland Avenue, Oakland, New Jersey, oh seven four three six. Monroe Landscaping LLC, P.O. Box two eleven, Harriman, New York, one oh nine two six. Be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees approves the twenty twenty-five lawn maintenance guidelines in agreement, including the prevailing wage, and hereby authorize each approved contractor to sign and adhere to the terms and conditions laid out in said agreement. I need a motion to approve these two contractors.
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Roy, aye, so carried, thank you. Next order of business, uh, event application, Easter rise sunrise service, First Presbyterian Church. Resolved, the Board of Trustees approves the event application submitted by the Reverend Jonathan Holkey from the First Presbyterian Church of Monroe for their Easter sunrise service being held at nine eleven Memorial for short service on Sunday, April twenty, twenty twenty-five, from six thirty AM to seven thirty AM. Sign off on the event applications made by the Building Department, Hyatt Department, and Police Department. There is no additional cost of police protection. The Monroe Police Department will provide officers to assist the event as needed. I need a motion to accept.
Barringer will make the motion.
Second?
Carl will second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Roy, aye, so carried. And the second resolution is resolved, the Board of Trustees waives the application fee for the First Prespe- First Presbyterian Church as it is a nonprofit organization. I need a motion to waive the application fee?
Carl will make that motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have anything. Counsel, do you have anything?
I do have some, some people executive session.
Okay.
It has to do with, uh, an update on litigation matters.
Okay.
Um, I had one thing I wanted to share. Um, Saturday, April twelfth, there's an open house at the Monroe Free Library from ten to twelve. So if anyone would like to go check out the library, they have a lot of great services. That's, uh, Saturday, April twelfth, from ten to twelve.
Thank you. Just the, Ferraro?
Well, the big day has arrived. Next Monday, we begin rebuilding, uh, airplane park. So all those who haven't signed up yet, please do so as quickly as possible. Um, emails are going out to all of the volunteers so far, informing them of when and where to appear based on the information that they sent us. Uh, it's a massive project, um, that is, uh, going to be hopefully a community project and a lot of fun for everyone. You've seen us moving along. The ground has been leveled. Tents have been put up for, uh, for our, the food and beverages section, as well as the registration and, uh, and for equipment handouts. So things are moving along really well. We moved the plane, uh, to the side, and, and we're working on making a even a better location for it, uh, up higher where it can really stand and look great. So I hope everyone who hasn't signed up will be signing up, and we'll see everyone on Monday.
Thank you for your hard work with that, Andy.
Thank you. Yes, uh, just one thing. Last week, the mayor and I attended the public hearing up at the county legislative chambers regarding the, um, proposed, uh, hundred and eighty-five million dollar, uh, Orange County sewer treatment plant. Uh, both the mayor and I spoke at that, um, at that meeting. They will be having additional public hearings as things move forward, but, um, we are there, we are making our voices heard, and, um, see where it takes us.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Anyone from the public wish to speak? Please come on up. Just give the clerk your name and come up to the microphone.
I really appreciate your work. I'm just saying that even if I come up sometimes and I give you a hard time, it's nothing but civil-
We're used to it.
I will sign up to help over there with the-
I hope so. That'd be great.
Really, it's, it's, it's just, I don't, I, I don't want us to s- and again, and I understand, that's why pushback is good for some sometimes, and, and we really appreciate the work you're doing, and, and it's great, and this is a beautiful village.
It's a beautiful village.
It is, we're so proud of it, and, and, like you said, public safety, fire department, EMS, everything over here is like, you walk out in the streets, it's beautiful, and the music is fine. I just want a little bit Jewish rock and roll too, but, you know.
If there were a station available on Sirius, we'd do that, uh, during, um, when, when it's available.
I, when I come home and the music is on, I'm the first one to turn it down over there too, so. But it's, it's, it's nice. It's, it, no critic. It's just basically, it's, I don't want it to turn on, turn in, not that I believe it will.
It won't.
And I just don't want it to start becoming this, this old thing, and, and we know that because we have tenants, and I don't want it to start running around. There is problems, problem has to be corrected. You're a hundred percent right with what you said. But from the other hand, we wanna make sure that it's, in a way that nobody goes into each other, and they're very scared. And I have people that are running, you knock on the door and they're just running on the beds.
Yeah, I, listen, I get it. But I did wanna say one thing. You, you came in after the, the meeting the other day, and I wanna thank you publicly, from you and the community, for acknowledging my mom's passing.
She rest in peace.
That was very thoughtful. Thank you.
Good night there.
Night.
Okay, uh, anyone else in the public?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Hector Vento. So I'm here, I guess, I'm not really representing myself. I'm kinda representing the business owners, 'cause of an incident that I saw about, probably about a month ago, um, after I had recently been employed in the area. It was a really troubling incident for me. That's why I'm here, and I've been listening to everybody and taking my time off from, from work to put these packets together. On the date of the incident, um, you know, I just wanna let you know, I contacted Mr. Ferraro, and he responded to me, you know, very timely manner, so I appreciate you, Mr. Ferr- I don't know Mr. Ferraro, so I'm not giving him any kudos, but, but he did, um, and I respect all you guys for doing what you do. I really do. You're in charge of a village, you're in charge of people and safety. I've been in that position myself. So the incident that I saw is, as I was coming down Lake Street one morning, I was on the right side. I'm not too familiar with the name of the businesses. I was around, I guess, a Mexican or South American restaurant on that side. As I'm coming down the street, I saw an exchange between Officer Pino, who I later found out was the parking enforcement officer, and it appeared that he was at the end of an exchange of giving a citizen a parking ticket. Now, I can't lie to you because I don't know what the exchange of the wording was. However, towards the end of that exchange, Mr. Pino abruptly came upon this person and invaded his face, his, invaded his space very forcibly, shouting at him in his face, okay? And again, I don't know what happened, but it just seemed to me a little too aggressive for, let's say, I don't know, fifteen-dollar parking ticket. The guy could have said something extremely mean about his wife, his kids. That, that's not the point, okay? So I just thought it was a little bit troubling. So I started doing a little bit research, 'cause that's what I like to do, right? I have no other thing, no, nothing else to do but my work. So I started speaking to the business owners, and I got some really horrendous stories about Mr. Pino, okay? But that, you know, just let me finish my story, 'cause it's a longer story, and, and it's not so much about Mr. Pino. He's doing his job. He's a parking enforcement officer. Stories I heard, people are sitting in their cars. Mr. Pino comes up, doesn't tell them to move, gives them a ticket, screaming at their faces. Handicap people trying to get change for the quarter machines, which as of today, I tried one because someone was having trouble with it, and I, I actually gave my credit card to this lady to put it in, 'cause the quarter machines are not working. You can't put quarters in it, okay? Little old ladies trying to put quarters in the machine, the machines are not working. They're getting tickets. People around are getting yelled at, getting parking. And again, I don't know the exchange. Now, I'm here more on the part of the business owners, 'cause I'm getting from the business owners that they're coming in the morning, they're trying to unload equipment, right? They go out for like maybe five, ten minutes, whatever, they come back, they're getting a ticket. And I'm gonna elaborate on the law a little bit. Now- And I'm going to elaborate on the law a little bit. Now, this is the thing, just imagine, you're, I think there's a dental office or something up here, you're a dentist, and you're working on someone's teeth. You park your car, you set your app, because I know there's an app, and then all of a sudden, your app goes off, in the middle of fixing someone's teeth, you gotta go out and refill that meter, okay? I think it's a little bit unfair on the burden that's being placed on the business owners. So my suggestion for that, which you all get a copy of, is to give the business owner some kind of placard where they could put on their rearview mirror, and then this way they could load and unload. Doesn't give them the pass to park all day, and that has to be explained to them, so that they don't get a ticket and they have to be constantly checking on their app. The stories, I could go on, it will take five hours, the sto, the horrendous stories I'm getting from, from the parking stuff, so I met at some point around that date with Sergeant Grasso, Lieutenant Young, and Sergeant Malieri. I had a really deep conversation with Sergeant Malieri, and then he referred me to Sergeant Grasso and Lieutenant Young. It seems to me like there's some miscommunication between the police department and the village and who's responsible for what. So let me tell you something about Officer Pino. I had a really good discussion with Officer Pino, he seemed friendly, he seemed nice, he explained to me all the parking regulations, but when you put into place, and I've been there, when the judicial and the legislative systems put into place a law that's kind of a little bit burdensome on the people of the village. It becomes really difficult for Mr. Pino to enforce that law because he's actually crapping in the place where he's eating. He has to see these people every day, and I'm not saying that some people don't need to get a ticket, they do. Parking enforcement is very important for the village, not so much of, of revenue, okay? Now, I looked up the revenue that the village made in twenty twenty four, and it's not a lot, so it's not about revenue. The village made approximately ten thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars in twenty twenty four in parking revenue. That's nothing, that amounts to a dollar point eleven cents per village resident. So it's not about the revenue, that's, that's not what it is. Again, I'm more for the business owners. They need some kind of break, because all these years, they're getting tickets and tickets for parking for a couple of minutes. Now, we're talking about the budget, for them, that's a tax, okay? They have to pay that, they have to go to court, they have to be burdened with these tickets. You know, not, not to mention the, the mental anxiety it creates with the app, going to court, you know, trying to get rid of the ticket, so that's the reason why I'm here. Couple other things that came from the business owners, community policing, there's no community policing down Lake Street. I can't remember, they can't remember a time where an officer walked up and down and went into every business and said, how are you doing, what's going on, are there any problems? So that's, that was another one of my concerns, I'm like, why aren't police officers coming here and talking? Because sometimes, if there's a crime, and you're friendly with the business owners, the business owners may be more inclined to help out the police. So there's no community policing. I delve into the, the status of the police department, okay? There seems to be more civilians in the police department than there are actual police officers. According to what I looked up, there are about seventeen civilians positions and fifteen police officers. Now, I'm not going to go out here and tell you that that's right or wrong, because if your crime rates are down, then you probably don't need that many police officers, right? If your crime rates are up, I would probably suggest trying to get a grant and getting more police officers. There are also, according to FBI statistics, a lot of crimes that go unreported, that people don't report. That does not mean the crimes are still not happening. So I think the village and the police department need to speak to each other and maybe come into some kind of cahoots of, do we need more police officers? If we do, can we designate a police officer to provide community policing, go up and down every once in a while, speak to the business owners, do business checks, right? Go around the parking lots, check the cars. The other day, it went unreported, a car, a truck was stolen from the parking lot, okay? Another car was broken into. I think those, those are the only two re- recently. So there's a lot of crime that goes unreported. Now, if the crime goes reported, right? It doesn't look good for the town, because now you have a higher crime rate. However, what that does is, it gives you a little bit of leverage to apply for a grant. Maybe through federal funding to get more police officers and resources out here. So that was another thing. Now, let me read this last thing to you, and then I have a copy of my proposals that I'll really quick read over, and two things that really don't relate to this. Okay. The principal mission of the Monroe Police Department is to serve the community by protecting life and property, preventing crime, enforcing laws, and maintaining order for all citizens. It is essential for all members to remember that in the execution of our duties, we act not for ourselves, but for the good of the public. We respect and protect the rights of all citizens and perform our duties with honesty, zeal, courage, discretion, fidelity, and sound judgment. Central to our mission are the values that guide our work and decisions and help us to contribute, contribute to the quality of life, contribute to the quality of life in the village of Monroe. Our values are characteristics or qualities of worth. They are non-negotiable, although we may need to balance them, we will never ignore them for the sake of the expedient, or the experiencey, expediency, or personal preference. We hold our values constantly before us to teach and remind us that the community of, the community of our ideals. They are the foundation upon which our policies, goals, and operations unit are built. In fulfilling our mission, we need to support citizens, we need to support citizens, elected representatives, government officials, and the criminal justice system. In order to provide the quality of service our values commit us to providing. We, the members of the Monroe Police Department, are committed for the following values. Respect laws and constitution, integrity and excellence, accountability, cooperation, and kind of what I'm here for, not as an enemy to you guys, but problem solving. So those are the values that I got from the website. So I made a couple of notations here, you could correct me, because I'm new to this environment, okay? But from what I saw, I saw no community policing, not a community policing officer actually walking around, talking to the business owners. I spoke with Sergeant Grasso, he says in the summer, they have a bike, bike patrol, right? Well, you can't fit a bike into a business, you gotta get off your bike and go inside the business and talk to people, right? And then he said only in the summer, so how about in the winter time, okay? Now, I didn't see, or I don't see, and you could correct me again, a liaison to the community businesses, okay? A Hebrew or Spanish speaker to be a representative to those communities. I could be wrong, please let me know, okay? And, yeah, and that's about it. Now, I made a proposal, which I'll give all you guys a copy, let me read it to you before I leave. And these are just brainstorm stuff, so I may not be right, I'm, I'm, I'm being honest with you, I may not be right, so. One of the things suggested was relieving the business owners of parking tickets when loading and unloading, especially during the mornings and evenings. Issuing two placards to be displayed on the rearview mirror, because parking tickets are an added task to business owner. It's very difficult for them to conduct businesses, having to worry about the parking meter replenishment and the tickets. So I would say have an officer, maybe at the beginning of the year, hand the placards out, speak to the business owners and explain to them what, what may or may not be the new regulations for that year concerning the placards. Business owners have responsibility too. Business owners must not abuse the park, the, the parking placard privilege, or it can be taken away. They can also, again, that's a budgetary thing, I don't know how you guys would do it, if need be, okay, pay a yearly fee for the placard, but at face value, not to make any money for the village or for the police department. So that, because it's going to cost something to print it, unless you do it on the computer or an Excel or something, or WordPerfect, okay? So basically, for the placard, maybe they could pay a yearly fee, okay? Now, they must also inform the patrons of the business, they're on their own, okay? Because I think at one point, the, if I understand correctly, the parking meters were taken away, and then the business owners were complaining that other people from different areas were coming to shop, and they took their parking spaces, so. This is for the business owners, this is not for the public, so Mr. Pino and the other parking attenders could keep on sliding tickets to everybody else that comes in here. This is more, more importantly for the business owners. So they need to educate their patrons that they can't park in front of that business unless they've paid the meter. However, the meters need to be in good operating, operating condition, it has to be able to accept quarters, if, if that's what the meter say, because I saw your video, Mr. Dwyer.
Yeah, let me just pause, pause real quick. Are you speaking about one specific meter?
Now, the one I tried to, this lady was trying to.
Which one was it?
It was the one in front of the bakery.
Okay, so, uh.
What happened was, if, if I can, a Ukrainian lady hardly spoken, was trying to put quarters in, so I was walking by, and I said, you need help, she, it won't take it, you know, I couldn't understand her, it won't take it. So I tried her quarters, it wouldn't take the quarters. Now, I've heard from other business owners that those meters have not been taking quarters.
Just pause right there, okay? So you approached the meter, and your first action is what?
I took her quarter, I said, let me try it for you.
So what did you do?
I tried to put the quarter in.
It locks it out.
Okay.
And the reason it is, is your first action, according to the meter description, is to put the plate number in. When you put the plate number in, the quarter's open, slot's open, takes the quarter.
I did that.
And it didn't take it then?
Didn't take it.
But that I can't speak to, but you did say.
I went over to her car, it was like L T H something, I remember.
No, I get it, but when I did just ask you, what was your first action, you said you attempted to put the quarter in.
Yes, yeah, I, I believe so, right.
That won't work.
Right, but then I kind of reset it, and I tried to put her quarter in with her plate number first, because I had to, her car was here, I walked over to her car, it was like L T H something.
Okay, so that's the one in the front of the bakery.
But I'm also getting from other business owners that most of the meters, the quarter mechanism is not working.
For that reason, take that to the bank.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Can, can I just interject for a second, just because I am, um, liaison to the police department, um, and I just have some info. We have twenty full-time police officers. Um, I know when you were talking about, um, we also have four part-time S R Os, and then the, the civilians would be the dispatchers, full-time and part-time, the crossing guards, the parking enforcement, and the secretary. But what I was going to say is, we have an amazing department, and their community, things that they do, if you were, actually were to look on the, uh, Facebook page, they have a youth academy, um, that kids go to in the summer, where they get all kinds of training on how to be a police officer. They have domestic violence outreach program, Hope Not Handcuffs, there's, the list goes on and on, so you might want to also just check that out and just see, I've never seen a department have so much going on with the community as ours does. We can talk about maybe walking around a little bit more, but I, I find them to be incredible.
I, I want to talk about the walking around. This board walks around, we go into those businesses, and we personally speak to every one of them. We ask them, we, we actually buy things from them, we sit down, we have lunch in all those different restaurants, whether it be Bossi's or Amendola's or any of them. We, we are part of this community and we do that, so the police don't necessarily have to be there. If we see something that's wrong, we'll contact our liaison who will then speak to the police. But we go there, we're there all the time, Mr. Ferr, uh, the, the shops on Lake, we are there all the time, trying to make them successful. We have tried to publish them, we've put them on our sites, we've put them on our Facebooks, we've done a lot for them, trying to build that business.
The venture out Monroe, we have commercials made by the mayor.
Let me tell you something, I don't know what they're telling you, but we're there all the time.
That, why am I here? That's what they're telling, let me, let me, let me go a step further. Everyone that I talked to, I don't know about the rest of you, gave a glory report on Mr. Dwyer. I don't know Mr. Dwyer, I don't know him. They all said they love him as a mayor. Now, you guys say you go into the establishment, but not the police. The police does not walk up on Lake Street, you guys don't have guns, service weapons.
Well, I know they go, I know they definitely, um, frequent these businesses also, so I mean, I, I, I'm not going to argue, I.
Berenger, I'm getting from the owners, they are now walking the beat. They have service weapons. When a police officer walks by me, I feel safe, right? No disrespect to you guys, you, you're the village people, you help, there's no doubt that you guys don't help them out, however, they feel safe when a police officer's there, their cars are getting broken into in the parking lots. A truck was stolen, what are you guys going to do? You don't have a weapon, you don't have police arrest powers, right? They feel safe when a police officer walk, it's not much to ask for one of these guys. Now, you know what's messed up community policing? Because I've done a lot of research on it, motorized patrol vehicles. Back in the nineteen seventies, when they started throwing all the police officers in patrol cars, now they're just riding around. I'm not saying anything bad about your department, I spoke with three beautiful officers a couple of days ago, and they're on board with this. They want to relieve Mr. Pino of some of his duties in this interaction, because I tell you what's going to happen, the summer's getting hot, one of these guys from the city is going to come up here, Mr. Pino is going to get into one of their faces. This guy may kill him in front of his family, and then you're going to have a lawsuit.
We don't want to go there.
No, 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 but what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, I'm worried about his safety.
And I appreciate that, no, no, and I appreciate that, I really do.
Why are we getting offended?
No, no, no.
I'm, I'm here to protect Mr. Pino.
I understand that. I understand that.
This could happen.
No, it could.
If Mr. Pino.
It can happen here.
No, no, it's not going to happen, not with me, but what I'm saying is, if Mr. Pino got in someone's face, the way he did with this guy, and it's the wrong guy, things could happen. I'm here to protect Mr. Pino. And try to come to some kind of solution, Mr. Pino was very nice to me.
No, no, I get it, no, I just want to say, I'm just trying to cut it short. What I'm trying to point out here is that, your point's taken, I made, page your notes, I understand you, Mr. Venti, I, I think the point is, uh, liaison will bring him back to the chief and the department, and they'll digest it and make your recommendations heard, and you'll leave your proposals right there.
Yes, one more thing about the department, you said twenty officers, you're probably right, but some of them are on what, what they're called admin positions. Admin positions like a lieutenant or the.
Yes, we have a lieutenant.
Right, they're not really out on the field doing what patrolmen and sergeants do. So technically, yes, on paper, you have twenty police officers, but they're not necessarily working police officers, you know, that, that's what I'm trying to, to say, but now, on, on another issue, okay?
Okay, I forgot, that's in there.
Well, no, no, I, I covered that, so.
We have another couple things.
Yeah, just two more things. So the parking meters, if you could come to some agreement to give the business owners some kind, just the business owners, everybody else gets a ticket, because they should be reading the law, they should be reading the meters. Now, when I first started coming down here, unbeknownst to me, I started feeding your geese. I didn't know it was illegal, because there are no signs. I finally found two signs, one all the way by airplane park, and the other one all the way at the other end by the, by the curb up there, by the stop sign. So one day I was walking, because I always go to the library, and I was starting to feed them, I would, I would give them some brioche bread, the good stuff, so I started giving them bread, and then, one day, for no reason, I decided. So, I started giving them bread, and then, one day, for no reason, I decided to walk to the airplane park area. Then I saw the sign. The signs are really deteriorating, you can barely read them, that's number one. But there's only two, one at each extreme end, so, that's one thing, maybe replacing those signs, but maybe putting one where the library is, because that's the area most traveled, no one goes to the end. Maybe now, when you guys build the airplane park, more people are gonna conjugate around that area, but there is nothing in the middle. So, if you might want to take a look at that. The other problem, two actual problems, another problem is, I don't see any signs for picking up after your dog along the pond area. I walk along there every morning, landmines, landmines, because when I first started feeding the geese, I stepped on one, okay? And then I have to evade myself, so maybe-
Yep.
And don't give them bags. People should be picking up after, I know communities where they put the little bags, no, that's their responsibility, you don't pick up after your dog, and there's a sign there, two hundred and fifty. That's the way you gotta treat it, because people are getting lacing. Now, the last problem may be a little problematic. I'm glad Mr. Abraham's probably not here. I drive up and down, and I don't know if you guys could do anything about it, but I'm this close to going up there and speaking to somebody. I drive up and down Highland Mill, Severn Spring Road. Every time I go up there, some people in the community, and I'm not gonna mention, but you could just imagine who they are, keep cutting me off, right? Keep beeping at me. I'm giving driving instructions, they're constantly beeping at my students, when I have student driver stickers in the back of my vehicle. Kids are running right in front of my vehicles, right? Back and forth, unsupervised.
Where is this?
The Hasidic community.
Oh, but that's not here.
No, I know, and I'm not saying, but, what I'm saying is, is there are gonna be issues of, now with, again, please don't take me the wrong way. I love kids, I have two of them, but I could see where this is gonna become problematic in the summer, these kids running, unsupervised, cutting off. So, the incident, why I even mentioned it here, is because as I was going up one of these streets-
Was this in the Village of Monroe?
I don't know if you guys are responsible for the Hasidic community of it.
No.
But I just want to mention it to you, because, I know you got nothing to, but I have to mention it, because this is a safety issue. As I'm going up one of the hills-
In the Village.
Oh, but not in Monroe.
Not in Monroe, Highland Mills.
Highland Mills?
Yeah, it's not here.
No, but I have to, trust me that I have to mention this to you, trust me, just give me two minutes. As I'm going up the hill, I see a yellow school bus dropping off kids, right? I come up behind it, right next to the yellow school bus, is another yellow school bus, trying to fit itself between a curb and this other yellow bus that's dropping off kids, right? I pull up and I'm waiting, because I know I can't go by the buses, right? This bus squeezes so tight to the other bus, their mirrors are almost touching, they were almost gonna collide. So, the guy on the left has to go up on the curb, a foot and a half, his back wheels, with kids on the bus, mind you, his back wheels go up on the curb, and then, I don't know if you've driven a bus, but when they come down, right, on those leaf springs, they come down hard with kids on the bus. He went like this, on the curb, boom, and kept going. That's all I got, sir.
Thank you.
Here are my proposals. I think Ms. Kim, you said six, right?
Yeah.
Anyone else in the public?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Oh, wait, right here. Come on up, please.
Come on up.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Mineo, I live at Three Reynolds Road. And I just, I have a question about tree preservation code. When I look at the Village Code, so I'm well-versed in the Town Code, when I look at the Town of Monroe Code, they have Article twenty, tree preservation, and, I'm just gonna, anyway, basically to preserve the aesthetic quality of beautiful trees in the Town of Monroe, to prevent flooding, to provide shade, you know, all the good stuff that trees are here for. But I'm not seeing anything like that in the Village Code, and I was wondering if that's something that we could look into-
Absolutely.
-to preserve in the Village, and I just had two quick questions, I hope, I hope quick, about, I was watching the Village Board meeting from ten one twenty-four, when the Monroe Woodbury Islamic Center was in front of you guys for a bond acceptance.
Sure.
And there was some discussion on the video of the historic side of that structure that dates back to seventeen forty-one, and there was some discussion of the Village picking up that structure and moving it to somewhere to preserve it, and I was wondering-
Will that happen?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, so I went up there, I went to the building, I spent about three hours with them, and there's several issues. So, the first issue, I thought it was the right side, not the left side.
You're standing on Orange Turnpike, looking up the hill, it's the right side.
The single side with the little-
The shorter side.
Yes, that's the side I thought was original, because in my hand, yeah, me too, it's not. The left side's the money shot, that's the two-story building, and frankly, the idea was to lift it up, which I've actually done, and separate it from the two-story house, and then trailer it out of there, and it's just a ride down stage road and put it over here, is where, well, that's speculative over there, but over here, I thought it was another opportunity. But it's not in great condition, the two-story, and the amount of work that we would have to do is prohibitive with Orange Rockland, prohibitive, to get, every single service line would have to come down, every service in every home would have to be disconnected, and then reconnected. They said they're ballparking maybe in excess of two hundred grand. Unfortunately, but he did give us an opportunity to go in and take artifacts from the house-
Great.
-which I offered to the Monroe Historical Society, if they wanted to. There are some stones out front that I'm gonna pick up for the Village's preservation, so they were very happy to have it. So, there are some pieces, and they also offered the barn, if anybody wanted it. There's a barn in the back, yeah.
The red barn? That would be great. And just in terms of a bond acceptance, is that the Town is offering bond? I'm not a financier, I don't understand how it works, I'm an educator, I don't know.
So, what happens is, they propose a cost of construction, and that cost of construction gets sent to our consultant, our engineer, and he reviews it, and he says, "Okay, your site plan says you're gonna do this, 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 and this, and you're gonna have drainage, and you're gonna put trees in, and you're gonna build this building, and this is..." The purpose of the bond, or a letter of credit, or however it form, sometimes it's cash, depends on what they, you know, the engineer reviews it and says, "Yes, what they've proposed in cost valuation is acceptable to the Village of Monroe on our behalf." So, when he comes to us, he's made a, already made a letter of recommendation, "I agree, I think these blah blah blah, and I support this bond number." So, should they default on the construction, for some reason or another, we have the ability to call in that letter of credit, and do something to save the yard off, save the property off, possibly do maybe site conditions, things like that. We're not gonna build a building, but we're certainly gonna get the place straightened out and made, say, grassed, treed, clean, neat, and safe.
So, it is a letter of credit from the Town, it's not-
Not from the Town.
Village, sorry.
Not from the Village, it's from a lending institution to the Village. We were named as the, as the, as the, I won't say the word, sure.
Like a cosigner kind of situation, or like a cosigner, or something like that?
No, 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 clearly, in order for them to be able to even do this, the planning board required certain things. Amongst them was this bond, securing funds, should they not be able to fulfill their promise to build this property, as agreed to by the planning board, we would have this, this letter of credit to capture monies, to save off the property, to make it grass, make it look like a park almost, or whatever form that is, preserve everything that we can on the property.
And just as another consideration, I don't know if this is Town or Village, but for the, considering the SR twenty zoning with houses of worship, and community houses of worship, and if you're a residential homeowner, living next to a lot that's over two acres, the reality of something being twenty-four feet off your property line, thirty-six feet high, is some really gut-wrenching kind of zoning, and I don't know if the Town or the Village could reconsider. I hope no one ever has to go through this.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good evening, my name is Bonnie Franzen, I'm here in my capacity as a Village resident, so ignore this. I actually wanted to come and express a positive comment and a thank you for recent code enforcement changes. In my neighborhood, we have various problematic properties that are definitely being used as multi-dwelling buildings. But, what I noticed recently was at the corner of Oakland and Mill Street, the corner property, which was problematic, it used to be a beautiful brick house right there, along Oakland, which has, you know, quite a few lovely houses. I noticed that the condition there, which was definitely going downhill, and again, appeared to be used inappropriately, suddenly no one's there, and it's because code enforcement worked. And I had an opportunity to communicate with the new, I guess, code enforcement officer, found him to be highly accessible, willing to listen, and it feels very refreshing compared to what was. And so, from my perspective, the more code enforcement, the better. If I'm gonna spend my Village taxes on something, I find that the code enforcement is particularly worthwhile, because we have to preserve our community character and our neighborhoods. And where I live, I just feel particularly vulnerable, if you don't know where I live, I'm over across the street, you know, from the Goose Pond on Bridge Street, and my neighborhood is changing, and I don't mind who lives there, what I mind is that they're not living in accordance with the law, which is a single-family neighborhood, and which is what's allowed in that particular neighborhood. So, again, I am just here to express appreciation, to see something very visible in terms of a change, and then two suggestions with regard to the noise law. So, one of the things we notice quite a bit in my neighborhood is that because of the tenants there, we frequently hear the beeping of the cars, where people are coming, six AM, seven AM, and it's like honk, because they're getting one of the workers to go work somewhere else in one of the nearby communities. So, I know, like ninety-nine percent certain, New York City has a no honk law, that if you're gonna be using your car horn, it's for vehicle purposes, for accidents, for, you know, what it's intended for. And so, I know it'd probably be hard to enforce, but I think even if it were on the books, it might stop the people who are, you know, the serial offenders, where every single morning, early in the morning, they're honking, because it can't just, whoever lives in that house can't just come out when they're supposed to. And I've noticed that happening in our community. The second thing was regarding the noise law. My recollection, because I had an incident next to me, where if they're gonna measure noise for complaint purposes, they're measuring it from the property where the person is complaining. So, if I were complaining about a house that's three houses down from me, my recollection is that law enforcement comes to my property, measures it from there. And I would say, being in the business, that it's more common that it's measured from the property line, closest to where the noise source is. A, it's on public land, B, I may find, or you may find, that something is not exceeding the decibel level at my property line, that doesn't mean that I don't hear it. And especially when you're talking about the bass, so, there's a lot, particular kinds of music being played, I can be in my house, and even though technically it may not meet a decibel level, it's not like I'm not hearing it, and it's not like sometimes I'm not feeling it. So, I would just ask that if you're going through the process of looking at laws, to see how to strengthen them for code enforcement purposes, to just revisit the noise law again, and then possibly think of this, you know, you honk your car when there's a purpose for your car having a horn, and it's not necessarily to tell people that, to come out to their car. So, again, that's really it, but again, I wanted to say thank you for all the efforts that the Village is making, it's very noticeable with the new people, and definitely support code enforcement, and support, you know, the department, and anything that helps with, you know, getting these properties back to what they're intended to be. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Gotta make it quick.
Very quick, so, just to let, I'm very pro-police, number one, I'll help them out anytime, and two, I did volunteer three of my off-duty days to help with the airplane park.
Thank you.
I'm investing in the community, I just want to let you know.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in the public? Okay, I need a motion to go into executive for litigation, attorney-client litigation matters.
We're helping make the motion.
Go to the question.
Caranger, aye.
Wherever I, Carly.
Carrie, Carrie, aye.